All right. I think we'll get rolling. Welcome to the November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen ZBA meeting. I think we'll start right in on our first application.
Irving and Mary Jane Versoy of forty-four Captain Pierce Road, Citrus, requests special permit, binding in accordance with MGL Chapter forty, Section six ten point two B of the Cituate zoning by law to allow the creation of a fifty-foot frontage lot for Lot one on the submitted plan of land for pre-existing non-conforming property at forty-four Captain Pierce Road, Citrus Mass, Assessors' Map twenty-seven, Block three, House sixty.
Okay. Hi, guys. My name is James Garfield, one of the engineers at Morse Engineering, here today to represent Irving and Mary Jane Versoy for the special permit at Lot one forty-four Captain Pierce Road. The special permit is in regards to a fifty-foot frontage lot, which is in accordance with Section six ten two B of the Cituate zoning bylaws. As you can see, our fifty feet of frontage is located on the public way of Captain Pierce Road. Our lot lies within the residence R two zoning district, which requires a minimum lot area of twenty thousand square feet. Our lot is more than twice that amount, being forty-two thousand twenty-five square feet. Under our plan notes section, we've added a note that states that the lot shall not be further subdivided, and it should be noted that the planning board has already endorsed the Form A plan for this site. So with that, I'll leave it over to you guys.
Yeah, I think you addressed some. And so you've addressed the square footage of wetlands as well with the seven twenty-six?
Yep.
And then even after we take that out, your uplands is still?
More than twice the amount.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I just, I noticed that the property has been in the family for about seventy years, over seventy years, seventy years and ten months or so. And when the house came on the market, I looked at the photos online, and it's a beautiful old home, but the purpose of this bylaw is designed for specifically this purpose, to create estate lots. This is, it's twice the required area, more than twice the required area, and it enables the, enables this house to stay intact. Somebody else could, with the frontage that you have, could come in and demolish everything and put up a bunch of houses. So it's, it'll nice, it's nice to see that it's going to stay intact, these two house lots. So, and good luck to the, to the family.
Any other questions?
This is straightforward.
Yeah, the Lot three, you're not creating a third lot, just?
It's already created.
Um, it's, we've already gone through planning for the Form A plan for this.
Oh, okay.
But we're only discussing Lot one.
Okay.
But that's an A and R because the building doesn't matter because it's not affected for furniture. I don't, I, I think it's, I think it's completely consistent with the, with the-
Yeah, if you would mind just taking the driveway down. Uh, no, I assume lot width is measured left to right, as opposed to north to south.
Yeah.
Since it's two frontages. So it's got plenty of lot width through the house.
Uh, any questions from the audience?
Yes.
If you just state-
Trying to explain what you're planning to do and what-
If you could state your, just your name and address for the record.
I'm going to go on the water to the north.
Okay.
Sorry, your, your address?
Fifty Captain Pierce Road.
He's right on the left.
Thank you?
You're with my wife and Mary.
Thank you.
So what exactly are you proposing?
If you see from the, from the drawing there, there's a fifty-foot driveway, if you will, on the left-hand side, going up to the lot in the rear. The lot in the rear is double what is needed.
It's going to be a lot, and that's going to be a lot.
And also, as he stated, the lot in the rear cannot be further broken down, so once it's established as a single lot, it will never be able to become two lots.
I'm not part of this.
He's just, he's just over. So you could ask us.
So the reason for that is-
Yeah, just if you could state the question one more time, so we could-
Okay. I'm curious as to why you're not asking for the variance, the frontage, to be up here rather than here, because this is going to destroy something that's hundreds of years old.
Sir, first of all, it's not a variance that they're seeking. They're seeking, it's an application, it complies one hundred percent with the bylaw. So they're, they're seeking a permit, they're entitled to do this as a matter of the Cituate zoning bylaw. So the question is, why is the driveway at Captain Pierce Road next to your property versus next to your neighbor's, the Harringtons, to the, the north? And from an engineering standpoint, you'd want better sightlines, and you're going to have better sightlines next to your property than you would at the other, at the other location next to the Harringtons property.
And then the wetlands issue.
And furthermore, furthermore, yeah, you'd have a wetlands crossing, and there'd be wetlands issues that you'd have to address.
Sightlines means the traffic. When you're exiting this, this driveway, you want to have good sightline.
Okay. Raise my objections. Number one, where they're proposing to put it, there are trees there, there's a row of trees there that's over, they're over a hundred feet tall. They've been there forever. It's part of the, what reason we bought our house. And to put that fifty feet, and they're going to have to wipe out all those trees, that's like wiping out the side of my property and exposing me to all of this. My second objection is, we bought this house, our house, thirty-three years ago, large lot sizes, hundred-foot frontage, and we brought it there to be in that type of a neighborhood. If you go all around the block from their house, and just, there's this whole area between the wetlands and Captain Pierce that it kind of wraps around. All those houses have really large lots, they all have a hundred-foot frontage. I look to my left, there's one house, to my right, there's one house, way in the back, there's one house. I really don't want to have to look at three houses. And I really don't want to have a hundred-foot tall bank of trees. It's probably a hundred feet tall by a hundred feet deep. It's the entire apartment of the original, the lower part where there already is a house. And that's the divider between the property. And, I mean, seriously, these trees are, they're beautiful, they're hundreds of years old, they're as historic as anything in the town. So I object to that, and I also object just to the fact of three houses and a lot next to me.
Mr. Garfield, one house.
But that's what they're asking for in this application.
Mr. Garfield, has this lot, has this lot been sold?
Um, not to my knowledge.
You could buy the lot, sir.
I can't afford it.
I may, I may be able to help a little bit. The fifty-foot frontage means that that land goes with the lot. Doesn't mean it's going to be a fifty-foot driveway. Doesn't even have to be fifty-foot cleared. It, the driveway's going to go, apparently will go through that area, because although it could access off the other side, even with this plan, frontage does not necessarily mean that we're fronting the driveways accessing that way. They have access at the other end. But the plan shows us that there's wetlands there. There may be other issues that there, they may choose to enter their driveway on that portion of land. So you're concerned about the trees. I'm sure an owner of this parcel would be concerned about the trees as well. They wouldn't want to denude it all the way through, but that would be their right, it's their property. In terms, excuse me. In terms of the trees, I presume the trees are not cut all the way to your lot line, so you will still have tree coverage on your lot line, or is it, is it vegetated?
They are bound.
Well, the boundary is a, a line on the, on the ground. The vegetation on those properties are, depends on the individual owns the property. The, in terms of density, this will be one of the largest lots in the area, not one of the smallest. It has a fifty-foot frontage, but it's got twice the lot area. As Brian said at the beginning here, if you take out the barn in the house and add all of this property together, you'd probably get perhaps four houses in there with, under current, well, you have to take out some land, some for a road, common driveway, other issues. But there may be other ways to do this that would make it more dense, but still consistent with the by right in the bylaw. So although I appreciate your concerns, I'm not sure that they're founded on what's before us. How many trees get cut down is up to the owner of the property. They could be cut down even if this wasn't a lot. That whole area behind could be turned into a field for growing Christmas trees or-
Well, it used to be a field, it could be returned to a field.
It could be returned to a field. I mean, I, I do appreciate trees, but as my father told me, the, Mr. Tilden used to stand up on the top of Pheasant Hill, and it was clear-cut all the way to the ocean. So our town has a lot of new trees in the lifetime of, well, Mr. Tilden would have been, he'd be about a hundred and twenty now.
Yeah.
But he recalled in his lifetime that there were no trees between Pheasant Hill and the ocean, so.
Well, I find the idea of four houses going in there pretty, pretty-
There, I didn't, they didn't suggest that. This is actually limiting it-
You just said it's possible.
No, not the way this plan is being created. This plan's being created will forever, in perpetuity, make that a fifty-foot frontage lot, which can never be merged or joined or subdivided with the other lots.
So you can have three?
Yes, there would be three. It's, it's limited, he's reducing the potential density here because of this application, not increasing it.
For the fifty-foot lot, he's giving up one of his lots, in essence, if he wanted to break up that way. That's why it's doubled the lot size. So he's not going after the maximum that he could do here, it's certainly-
It's preserving an additional twenty thousand square feet.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Just a name and address for the record.
Michael Kellaher, thirty-five, Captain Pierce Road. I live right across the street. My concern is the safety of people that probably, I've been there twenty-five years, we've probably had a dozen accidents on that curve. And you're going to add two more driveways there? I'm just saying, it's, there's going to be more accidents.
The lot that's in front of us would add, would add one driveway.
We're going to be coming right in that corner, people are going to get hit all the time. Look at that curve, it's black scuff marks from tigers, I hear them all day, so. You know, and you're, you know, taking away more land for deer and everything else, so.
I, again, I don't mean to, I do play a teacher in my real job, and I don't mean to be, sound that way, but the land is owned by the individual, individuals. They have a right to do with it as we allow in our bylaws. This application is actually reducing what they could potentially do with it. Anyone who has property on a way that's buildable can build on it. I wouldn't, I don't think you'd want your rights taken away as a landowner because of the deer. If, if the town wants to buy it, if the town wants to buy it, if a generous philanthropist wants to buy it and turn it into a deer sanctuary, that'd be great. But as, again, Brian pointed out, this is a, this house is easily over a hundred years old. I didn't even bother to look how old it is, but having been in it when I was about twelve, oh, probably eight. It's an old house, and it's being preserved, which I think is to the advantage of the neighborhood. So I would applaud the applicant in that respect.
And in addition, what they're asking for is a matter of right, not a matter of, do they need permission for it? It's, it's in the bylaw and states it that way that it's allowed use and allowed furniture. So we, we don't have much say in saying, no, you can't do this, because the precedent has already been set over many years of this being allowed throughout the town.
And it's actually why the, the bylaw, when it was created, was specifically stated, we have these houses that were built near the streets with a lot of backland, which was once farmland, which can't be accessed unless we take the house down, we're going to lose those houses, let's create an access to, do a fifty-foot frontage to access rear land. This has, this is classic for, for why we, why the town, in their wisdom, made the bylaw. Now, they can always change that, but at the moment, that's the bylaw we have.
Well, does that, do the laws have a condition that they can't tear down the old house?
Nope.
So government, you're going to use whatever you want?
Could.
Any other questions?
John Stone, forty-five, Captain Pierce, directly across the street from the house that, at least for now, is remaining. So if I'm to understand this correctly, the driveway, is that narrow strip to the left of the house, existing house, correct?
That's the lot. That's a fifty-foot opening. The driveway might only be fifteen feet wide of that fifty feet, so, yes.
I don't know if this is the appropriate group to ask this. I'm, I'm under the understanding that there's some water drainage underground there, coming from there, going through our yard into a drain on the other side of the road. The reason I'm raising it is, it hasn't been working properly, and it's been flooding the backyard, although I, granted, we've been getting a lot more rain than typical, but it's literally flooding our backyard. And I'm wondering, how do I find out if there's going to be a problem in building this and affecting that drain, any differently than it is now? Similar to what's driving down Anfinall or Anvinyl, I don't know the name of that.
Anvinyl.
Vinal.
The new development going there is creating a lot of flow and a lot, a lot more water on the road. I'm sure they're addressing it. But I'm concerned with the backyard, and if any of this impacts that drainage. Who do I speak to?
If there's, if there's, if there's stormwater issues associated with the roadway or drainage systems that are already in place, the DPW would be able to look at that for you. The construction on the property, any work that might be done to build upon, to develop this property, would require a review of, of the plans, and they would not be allowed to discharge any water off their property, which currently is charged on their property. So that's taken into consideration at the time the plan is developed.
Okay.
So new, new construction does not relocate water onto your, onto the neighbor's property. It can't. If, if something should be shown, that it happens, the owner is responsible to mitigate that.
And that takes place when the building permit is applied for. So we're, we can't look at that now, because that's not in front of us.
Okay.
So, but that will be, you know, looked at whether they decide to put there.
I don't believe it's storm drain. I was told by a neighbor who's been there, I've only been there, we've been there six years, so I don't know if it's, but I was told that there's a piping coming from that house, actually, or drainage from the house underground that kind of comes down the hill and out on backyard. So I don't know if making this, making this is going to impact that.
Which is built in eighteen-
Later meeting to address this? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I would, stormwater bylaw would be addressed when they take out their building permit, so that all, all the drainage that's created from the new project will be dealt with on their property, not be able to go offsite.
I mean-
Hi, I'm Susan, I'm a fourth-hand technician. I love the trees, and I understand, I can't really address that here, but I'm also worried about that water table. It's something, when we're driving by Anvinyl, I'm not sure they anticipated the problems that were going to happen once those, all those houses were put in there, and now we've got the ice, we've got, I don't know if anyone's driven by there, but there's like a, it's a dangerous, it's next to a school, it's a big giant-
Swer.
Like small reservoir of water that alongside the development, and I don't imagine that was anticipated when that was done. So when this is addressed with the building permit situation, will we be able to be included, or can we participate in that? Because our neighbors to the left, and our neighbors to the left, and our neighbors to the right, have their flooded basins constantly, even with or without rain. So something's going on there that's ancient, it's an ancient something that's putting tights everywhere, but there's no doubt that putting another house or two in there is going to raise the water table.
One house.
One, one house, okay. So is that something that will get-
I think you would find an engineer, I'm not an engineer, you know, you would not get notification about it, it would be, the building permit is a direct process with the building commissioner. The, I'm not sure that an engineer would say that putting a house in, a foundation in raises the water table. I think that it, it might redirect flow of water. That would be something they would consider in the design. Usually, the bigger issue is loss of, of permeable material because of roof, the roof system, the rain doesn't work through. But as with many of our hills in Cituate, they're clay. They, the reason that they didn't get washed away by the glacier is they're clay. They're, they're sitting there, and the water doesn't penetrate them very well. But in order to build on this, they'd have to have percolation for, is this on septic?
Yes, septic.
So it's on septic, they'd have to be percolation tests, which I presume they may have already done. But all these things do come into consideration anytime construction takes place. And sometimes when construction's in process, we do see water running off the lots and issues that, like on Anvinyl, that hopefully is, when the projects are complete, they're resolved because all the infrastructure's in place.
Any other questions?
Move to, grant the applicant, Irving and Mary Jane Versoy, fifty-foot frontage lot in accordance with the plan of Stephen Moran dated, of Morse Engineering, dated October seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, under Section six ten point two B, the Cituate zoning bylaw.
The condition is, is stated on the plan.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's, and that's in the decision. Can't be further divided.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
And the decision is what-
This was all part of, I think this was all part of, Lawson's farm was right across the street.
Yeah.
That's where they, they kept the, the mares, and then the, they kept the sexes separate by the railroad tracks, so like they were on different sides of the tracks.
Yeah.
Race track was there.
Sounds like a safety hazard.
The race track was further across?
Oh, no, they, he had, he had his fences.
He was a kid, there were still-
All right, we'll get back to it. We'll get on with our second application.
Hank Joseph, Anis of sixty, Pollia Road, Citrus Mass, requests a finding in accordance with Cituate zoning by law, Sections eight ten point two, nine fifty point two D, and/or GL Chapter forty-eight, Section six, and/or any other reasons that the Board can feel may grant that the raising and reconstruction change and renovation of pre-existing non-conforming single-family residential dwellings on existing non-conforming lots at sixty-dollar a week in Cituate, Assessors' Maps six, sixty-four block, narrow practical dwell will not substantially more injurious to the neighborhood than the existing structure is.
Thank you. Also, we did receive a letter from the neighbor at fifty-four, Pollia, in favor of the project as well, and that's stated in the record.
Great. News to me. My name is Jeff Delisi, I'm here with Brendan Sullivan of Cavan Arrow Consulting, as well as my client, Joe Anis, back there. So I know that we have a relatively new member of the board, so this is kind of a straightforward application. I know he's kind of a greenie, so I'll move it along. Basically, raise and reconstruct. The house was built in nineteen thirty. The house is dimensionally conforming presently to the front and side yards. The lot area is about half the size of the required ten thousand square feet in the area, and the frontage of the lot is presently fifty feet. The lot was laid out prior to zoning, I believe in the, well, it was laid out prior to zoning, I have, the record map is in the, is in the application. Nineteen ten. Nineteen ten. I couldn't tell if it was nineteen or eighteen-ten on the plan, but-
I don't think it was eighteen-ten.
Anyway, it's a two-story house at one thousand two hundred and ninety-six square feet, okay? The, the proposed reconstructed house is going to eliminate the front and side yard nonconformities altogether. The house will be fully dimensionally compliant with the zoning bylaw. It is proposed that the increase in gross floor area would be a hundred and forty-four percent. There's a basement, whereas presently, there is no, there is no basement. Teriyaki architectural design has done the plans, they look great. Basically, we're looking for a finding under Section eight ten point two. And if Brendan, if you want to, explain the plan, would be great.
Sure. As Jeff said, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot and structure. It does not need the front yard set back by approximately three feet, side yard setback approximately six-four, which requires eight feet. New structure will be setback off-road thirty point two feet, the front, the front, the front, setback requires thirty feet, and both side yard, both side yard will be about eight point two feet from the requirement. We've been to North River Commission, they're approved of them, we do not need stormwater nor continuation approval for this. And the, the house is, it's on, you can see on some of the Pollia roadside, on the inland side, what halfway between Molin Circle and, like, Brown Ab is over here somewhere. So that's really about it.
It seems like the effort you've made to reduce two of the existing nonconformities, both side, front, yeah, setbacks, you know, frontage, lot width, really, not much you can do with that, that is what it is, it's going to remain what it is. Those are my two. And you're our councilor there?
Yes.
Okay.
I have nothing. I'm familiar with the, the area, familiar with the lot. I sold this house fifteen, seventeen years ago, or was involved with its sale to somebody, you know, three, three owners ago. But I've been in the house, the nineteen thirty house.
It'd be in eighteen, nineteen eighteen, not eighteen eighteen.
Yes, it's hard to tell on the plan, I assume.
George, George was hanging around, George Welf was early nineteen hundreds, all over the place. Barker Farm, everywhere.
Welch House.
The Welch Company.
That's quite a, that's quite a record plan, there's a lot of properties on it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, all of, all of Cedar Point was, Cedar Point, short, Sand Hills. I have no questions.
What did you?
One question I have, what's the ramification of the view corridor that's noted on this plan?
That's through the North River Commission. That's how they view, that's where their view corridor is for the structure, as, as seen from the North River.
So the fact that you're going to be impacting that corridor doesn't, that's not what it means, it means something else.
Right, it's not an easement.
It's your, it's your view that they're looking at, not somebody else's view, or?
It's, it's the, the North River Commission, they have setbacks from the North River, and the view corridor is measured, it's kind of not arbitrary, but they set where the view corridor is measured from. Yet even though the, the, the riverbank is too south across the street, but the view corridor is measured this way.
I see, okay.
So that has, so I basically use this plan for the North River Commission.
Thank you. That's, everybody else?
They're concerned about what they can see from the river, I think, and that's the, that's the view corridor. So if you're, if you're in the river, from some pers-
...line and basically they're building the house at great length and this is simply extending a porch roof and it's if it was an uncovered porch, it would be done by right. We're basically just allowing the roof. So to the degree that it is a an extension of the nonconformity, I think we probably need to find that it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Absolutely, and that's the whole point of the bylaw.
Not an intensification.
Right.
Just an extension.
Is an intensification, but it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
That's the finding.
So that's where the law is at, is first you determine what the nature of the nonconformity is, then you determine whether you're intensifying it. If the answer is no, you're not intensifying it, then you don't need zoning relief. If the answer is yes, then it could be done upon a finding.
Right.
And that's the scenario that we have, so long as you're not creating a new nonconformity.
And the point of driving down Brook Street is you look at the neighborhood to see whether or not the extension or the intensification is going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. And I submit, I would find that it does not.
I concur. I just think it's in I don't want people to misunderstand that we are, you know, ignoring the fact that this is being extended and therefore intensified potentially if we find that it is. But it's not a substantial change to the property or detrimental to the neighborhood.
We just need to address it.
We just need to address it.
And then it looks like also if we might want to consider the living space in the setbacks and at least address that too. It looks like some of the some of the living space is going to be in in the setback, not just the porch. Just kind of if I take the plan, kind of carry it over?
I don't think so.
I think because...
It looks like the drawing is the second story portion is the portion within the setback.
All right, because again, the setback is there, but if you look at the picture and the plans, it looks like the dormer is consistent with the existing plans and that might not necessarily match this. The dormer is aligned with that.
Right.
You know, so I don't we give them that relief now too, or do we that would step the dormer back?
I see. Is there a...
Yeah.
Because again, the site plan might not fully line up with the plan that you think you're doing, so if we don't, you know, if we don't address that relief at this portion of it, then...
Yep. In other words, the porch right now, what we're seeing is that the porch is within the setback, but the the addition, the portion with the alternate hash mark there is in the building area.
Right.
But is the proposed addition as shown here on the plan, or is it an extension of the front line of the existing house, which is kind of angled on the lot, it looks like?
So I'm not sure I understand your question and...
Well, does the addition come off that bump out that looks like maybe a chimney, or is it line up with that, or is it line up with the existing front of the house?
Oh, no, it lines up with the chimney portion there.
All right, so it actually is setback.
It's setback, so the dormer isn't aligned with the existing dormer is back. Yes, it is. It's setback. The addition on the front is setback to and to line up with the chimney in the front.
Okay.
So the dormer doesn't line up with the dormer, it's setback, so you're not seeking...
Yeah, relief for the dormer.
Yeah, it's setback, so that's...
And then even though the the main portion of the house may only be, say, 28 feet setback, there's already an addition, there's already a second story on that, so we're just reconfiguring bedrooms up there.
Sure.
On the second story.
So as long as the dormer is setback, it's just kind of again...
It's kind of a housekeeping thing.
Yeah, so we're not cleaning that up now, it might get confusing.
Okay, so to the extent that the board votes to approve tonight, is there anything in particular that the board would like to see in the draft decision that's addressed that isn't, you know, that's kind of specifically called out? I don't think it's necessary because we have the plan.
Your decision will reference the plan, what you're proposed to build is in accordance with the plan? I think you're good.
Bob, did you have any questions?
No, well, yes. Not questions, comments. This will have to go before the Conservation Commission.
Yep, we're on the agenda for Monday night.
Okay.
Good luck.
And also, we'll have to look carefully at what the implications of the Zone A-15 line touching the house, in the existing house at least. I think there may not be any, because the slab for the garage is listed, shown at 20, which is well out of above base flood elevation. And but again, when the plans come in, we'll review that and see where we stand with those issues.
Any questions? Well, nope. Here and there, so. Any other comments from the board? In that, I suppose, the motion.
On the application of Patrick and Elizabeth Reynolds, 47 Brook Street, Citewatt, Mass, in their request for a special permit, finding pursuant to Section 810.2B of the bylaw, move to the board find that the lot is preexisting, nonconforming, and that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental and injurious to the neighborhood than the existing structure or use. And I move that the board grant the application.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also from the street, this steps down a couple of feet from the street.
It won't be a problem.
It's pretty low from the street to it.
Oh, yeah. I'm just waiting to hear back.
Good luck.
Thanks a lot. Take care.
Leaving us?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you and your family, Jeff.
Be well.
I'm not going home. Back to the office.
Tonight, on a cold winter's evening.
With snow in the forecast.
That's right. Get your snow tires out. They already, they were out treating the streets already.
Really?
The streets are treated when I drove in.
It was like, it was like...
It was 36 degrees.
Yeah.
And we're supposed to have rain, you know? Better safe than sorry.
All right, we have our fourth half of the procedure, the request, if you want to read that in.
Okay. Request for a comprehensive permit to track bridge to the track, request an extension of the property and the permit issued on February 10 of 2003 and was recently modified on September 1st, 2017 for the property at 90 Stockbridge Road, Citewatt, Accessory and Map, 54 Block 2, Plaza 28.
All right, if you want to give us a very brief history.
You get a really brief history for the record, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael O'Shaughnessy. I'm here tonight with Mark Pilott from Dakota Partners. As you're aware, we're here requesting an extension to the comprehensive permit that was issued originally back in 2003 for the property at 96100 Stockbridge Road. This permit expires in February 19th of 2019. We're requesting a three-year extension.
A three-year extension?
A three-year extension. The reason we're asking for the extension is we've gotten a little bit behind on our construction drawings. The person from Dakota Partners that was before this board previously, Jim O'Brien, he had a health problem over the summer, so he was not following through with, not intentionally not following through, but due to his condition, he was unable to, you know, push the engineers to get the design done, the final construction drawings. Mark was engaged the end of September, I think is when he came on board, so he's chasing down all the permits. There was a sewage disposal permit, there was a superseding order of conditions, we have this permit. All the other permits have been extended, we're asking the board to extend this one as well.
Right. My son's a sophomore in college.
When this began?
He's 20 years old. He was not born when this first came in front of the board, and while I don't know that there's a single person in the state of Massachusetts that loves 40B, it is the best tool that we have to encourage the building of affordable housing. Dakota Partners didn't exist when this comprehensive permit was issued. You are not responsible for the 20-year delay that brings you here tonight, and I don't want you to think, although you are hearing my frustration...
I'll take it.
It's not your fault, and Mr. O'Shaughnessy, it's not your fault either, but you got to hear, you got to hear my complaint. 40B is a flawed, but it's the only mechanism that exists for the building of affordable housing. I have been on the Dakota Partners website, and I see that you guys do work all over, all over the country, but a lot of work in New England. But this is like some sort of an orphan at, in the Dakota Partners portfolio, and if we were to grant you a three-year permit, as we've granted virtually, this board has granted virtually every permit extension and modification that has been requested, I am hard pressed, because I've come to most of the meetings sadly, I'm hard pressed to think of an extension or an alteration that was not permitted by this board. Now, I was on the board for about 12 years, I get off for a couple of years or three years, and then I got back on the board, and I've heard this a bunch of times, and every time, there's a Mr. O'Shaughnessy and there's a person that is earnest as can be and has said, "We're doing everything we can." And I know that when you're here, you believe that, and I don't think that you are here trying to pull the wool over the board's eyes. But the bottom line is, nothing has happened, it's been 20 years, 20 years. A human being that did not exist has now been able to vote in a presidential election, and you haven't put a single building, buildable unit or built unit on the market. That's not good for business. It's not good to carry that from a business standpoint, and it's from an affordable housing standpoint, it's an unmitigated disaster. Nothing is done to add to the affordable housing stock in 20 years. Now, I'm in favor of giving you folks the benefit of the doubt, and I'm in favor of granting you an extension, but if it's your job to ride herd on the engineers, the designers, et cetera, all the folks that you need to do to get us, get you back in front of the town for your preconstruction meeting, I think a three-year permit is going to give you too much time. And I would be in favor of this board granting an extension, your permit expires in February, I would be in favor of granting you an extension, a three-month extension until May, and then let's see where we are in May. And I know that's not what you want to hear, but put yourself in my thing, if this board's responsibility is to apply 40B and to give 40B applicants a fair hearing, and you've had 20 years, you and your predecessors have had 20 years to do something, giving you three more years doesn't seem to me to be the answer to get these units built. I think holding your feet to the fire is a much better approach to getting something built than doing another three-year extension. That's my two cents, because, you know, I've been around for a little too long, maybe.
You've been here for 20 years.
Yeah. This was my first, this was my first application as chairman, and Ed has been here that long as well.
I've been here for 10 or 11 years.
Yeah, jeez.
You know, I can't disagree with you, I truly can't. I know that this was under another developer.
Yes, yes, yes.
And it was much bigger, and it was much unreasonable in the sense of, in my opinion, to what Citewatt really needs. So, and I'm, like I said, like Mike said, I came in because a gentleman had a heart attack. I had to pick up...
And I'm sorry about that, I really am.
He's doing great. He's in Georgia now.
Apparently, you're working him too hard.
Yes, they were. So I was brought in, I had basically to pick it up, I had four states, 10 projects like this, I had to get back online and get done. So I'm just basically a throwing neck. And I understand your frustration, and blame it, I have the same frustration with my design teams and everybody else, just because, you know, something happens, everyone stops, something still has to get done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I personally don't think three years, I mean, three months is adequate, that's just my personal feeling, just knowing construction and knowing how much I need to get done between now and then, and with all the holidays now, which is just, I'm dead in the water for the next three months and all intents purposes. So my personal feeling, I think that's too little. I don't disagree with you shortening it, personally. That's just me.
Don't, kick onto the table.
I'm not throwing it to the table. He will, but I'd rather be open and honest with you about it.
No, thank you, I appreciate that.
But he's looking after me, saying, "Mark, you need three years." I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, well, we might as well comment too, familiar.
Absolutely. Sorry to interrupt.
Do you guys want to start or... Comment or kick in or discuss?
No, I tend to, I tend to agree with Brian sentiments, you know, he didn't, he didn't even have a child yet, I was in, I'd just graduated high school. That was a lifetime ago. And I think what Brian said too about 40B is that it is, it can be, it can be a great vehicle, but this one has just obviously been sitting, lingering for an extended period of time, and I think, you know, an extension is right, but I think, I don't think we can let the leash out that far, I think the leash has to stay close, because I think it needs to be monitored, and I think if, as you guys said, you know, now you're serious about doing it, and you know, you're gonna, you know, grapple it, and you're gonna, you're gonna get ahead of it, show us, you know what I mean?
In addition to that, like you said too, it's not just the affordable, it's but you've had 20 years of neighbors wondering what's going to happen, when am I going to be packed, how's this going to happen, they come up, they check, oh, nothing's happened, they come up and check, nothing happened, so they can't, you know, when's it going to be completed, you know, construction's hot enough, let alone kind of having it sit here over your head for, you know, a number of years. What's it going to be? Is it going to be changed? Is it going to be this? You know, so there's certainly something to be said for that length of time, and again, without faulting you for your situation and where you've been in, but at some point, there's a certain amount of time that we want to restrict it to, that, all right, we might want to hear in, you know, six months or nine months, where you're at.
Yeah, I don't mind coming back. That's no problem. I'd be more than happy to come back every month and give you an update on where we stand with things.
You wouldn't be.
I don't know, Ed, you guys...
Ed, what do you think?
I think it's been a hell of a 20 years for the Red Sox.
Mr. Chairman, when Dakota was here back in April 17, 2017...
This was before the Red Sox won the World Series, in '04.
I think a representation, representation was made that they had a two or three-year build-out window, and I think that's the window Dakota's still trying to hit.
Yeah, because it's a phased project.
Right, so, you know, three months, it's kind of tight. I've seen it where a board will say, "No, we don't want to give you the three for the reasons you suggested." Would the board consider two or even 18 months? That at least gives Dakota some, and Mark some breathing room here to get his ducks in a row and to push this forward. I think the changes to the plans, at least from what I saw, and you guys know more about the project than I do, it started as a two-building with 20 houses, and now we're in 14 buildings, two-bedroom units, 74 total. I think the project has been massaged in a direction that's better than it was originally approved, so I don't think...
There have been, you know, wild fluctuations in the economy, which have necessitated those changes.
Right.
Which is why we've...
It's gone up, it crashed and gone up.
Yeah, which is why we've been so economy, when I say we, I mean, me and other...
I have a stack of the filings, and again, it was hard, and I looked through your file the other day, and it was real fun reading. Again, the three months is just, is a practical matter, is too short for Mark to do anything substantive to move this along with his engineers. You know, I'm sure you guys hear it all the time, the engineers are straight out these days, it's hard to get anyone to be responsive. Again, I think 18 months would be reasonable, this time.
And between what work has been done? I mean, as far as we've had the roadway layout approved, is there any...
Yeah, going back with my engineers on that, some of it has been just from a code standpoint, as you mentioned, some things are changed, I got to update it for it, and again, I had to go back with those other permits and make sure that the calculation's all right still from the standards of codes, so those are all things I got to go back and revisit because this individual's no longer here. I got to make sure that what I have is correct, and some of the things haven't been done to what it's supposed to be done, both from an energy standpoint and from a design standpoint, from a feasibility.
Do you still intend to build those buildings with the duplexes?
Yes, yes, yes. And we're in the process, and I mean, like, you know, like I always say, we're in the process of designing like math, to get as much as we can done, but, you know, not knowing extensions and stuff like that and other things in place, that makes it hard, and he's absolutely correct, hiring engineers and making sure they're on track has been tough as hell, and construction is even worse at this point in time, you know, just trying to get a job built, just economically, it's tough, because they got so much work out there.
A lot of manpower.
That, plus they charge you twice as much because they know they can't.
What do you guys think? I mean, I thought, I thought three months, tacking on three months to the February, bringing it to May, I thought that was reasonable, but do you want to say, you know, give them, say, six months, so until September?
I don't know. What do you think about a year, and then they have to come back? That would put it back in front of us this time next year.
Like I said, I'd be more than happy to come back, you know, three months, every three months and give you an update. It doesn't bother me, I prefer to keep you guys honest on what's happening.
To your point, if we do a year, I would ask that we get a progress report in six months. Like, not just a, "Hey, things are going great," like, not one paragraph, but something substantive.
That part I can guarantee, for sure.
And then, and then I'd be in favor of a year then.
Yeah, I'm thinking like, single-digit, yeah, like a six or like six months, you know?
So it's a year from when it expires in February? Would that be the starting point? Just so I'm clear, that's what I'm asking for, if that's what you're going to do.
I mean, that's what we're saying, the year extension, not from today, from February.
Right, right. Yeah, and we're trying to get...
That would give you a substantial portion of next year to really get your feet in the ground and get...
Absolutely. Blimey, I want to get shovels in the ground as soon as possible, because if I miss this window of opportunity, you know, being in real estate, you know, I have to get that window in.
The economy might change, there might be another project.
Yeah, you're going to have a new election, and that, you know, it's six months before half.
With the approval of Herringbrook, whatever it was called, Herringbrook Meadow, there's a, I assume there were no appeals were filed?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so that gives us a safe harbor.
To answer your question, yeah, we think we're insulated from the necessity of creating more affordable housing.
For two years?
I believe it's two years.
But that's...
But also Lawson Green is in the pipeline, and that's definitely a real project that's, you know, waiting for funding, but when they get that, they're ready to go.
But that would exclude projects that had already been approved?
I guess so. You may know the regulations better than I.
It would, Mr. Chairman.
It would, that was my assumption.
Because I don't, like, this project hasn't counted towards our stock yet.
So the way it would work is if building permits were issued in, in, I don't know, say, May, because so much time has passed, when COs were issued is when the units would start counting.
Yeah, and it's, each year you keep on adding houses, and that just takes your number up higher, but this number here, even though you might have been close, doesn't move because you're not adding more of these into the mix, it's the same pace to catch up. It's, you keep on building more and more, unless it's affordable as part of it, that thing just gets, your spread gets further apart.
Yeah, no, 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 I think that we were aware of that, but anyway, so I would, I would move that we grant them a one-year extension from the expiration of their permit, subject to a progress report.
Bless you.
God bless you, subject to a substantive progress report in six months.
Why don't we set a date on that?
Yeah.
For the, you know, do you want to say...
So six months?
May 1st of...
Does that work for you?
Yeah, May 1st is fine, yeah.
Because we will hold your feet to the fire, as far as that goes?
I'm all for it.
It all comes down to wording, I'm noticing the last one we did was six months, three years from the time the decision became final, so I think we need to change that wording. I'd recommend if we're going to do it, we say one year, we'll extend this permit until a date specific.
So we can say February 2002?
So we stop worrying whether it's...
Unless it's a year.
February 1st, 2020.
That's fine. I appreciate that. February 1, 2020.
That's fine, that's fair.
And that was...
And then with a...
Report to...
A report August 1, 2020.
May 1st, 2000.
What day of the week is that?
February?
Six months will be August.
Well, six months from February.
As long as it's a business day.
Oh, sure.
May is fine, I mean, if something is bad, it's an issue.
So you're going to do February 3, because that's, February 3 is a Monday.
Yeah.
1st is a Saturday.
In May?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, May 1st.
It does. So we'll extend it to 2/3/20.
It's a Thursday.
Subject to...
Thursday's, what is it, the...
And what day of the week is May 1st?
May 1st is Wednesday.
That's okay.
But you guys have a session then, or?
No, but we'll, we'll get something on May 1st, and then we'll meet the 3rd Thursday of May.
Okay.
That way, May 16th.
Yep.
We'll have it.
Yeah.
Okay. Put that on the calendar.
And again, I'm directing my ire at you, but I understand it's not necessarily your fault, but 20 years...
You've just accumulated the history that...
I think I started on this project, believe it or not, way back when, before I was working for myself, so I was there a long time ago as well.
It's taken me three months just to read through the files.
Were you with Mr. Tringali or Dick Cicchetti?
Mr. Freeman, Peter Freeman, I think he was before you folks at the time, yeah, maybe it was a different project, I could have swore it was this one, but...
You look familiar, I just can't remember which one it was.
Dick Cicchetti was involved for a while. He's a class act, this guy.
Yeah.
He was, he enabled us to come to some sort of a resolution. He got, the original developer was a gentleman named Mr. Tringali, and he was somewhat unreasonable and...
Difficult?
He was difficult, and, but, but Mr. Cicchetti was able to get Mr. Tringali to see reason, and it's better to build something than to continue to fight. So we were able to come to a compromise, and that's when, that was, I think in, whatever, 2003 that the permit was issued.
Right, yeah.
And then it just, it went on from there.
Writing, just... We're going to do a motion, do we do a motion?
Yeah. It's...
On this one?
So we're modifying paragraph 17 of the comprehensive permit, so that will be the motion. I'm going from the previous one, I'm guessing that that's the paragraph because they're quoting it here. So I would move that the board modify paragraph 17 of the original comprehensive permit as follows. This comprehensive permit shall expire February 3, 2020, if the applicant has not, for whatever cause, commenced construction on the project. Period, no.
Sure.
Shall expire, period.
And the applicant, furthermore, the applicant agrees to provide the board with a substantive...
Substantial update.
Progress report.
Progress report.
No later than May 1, 2019.
May 1, 2019, and I'd even put it in, and to appear before the board at the regular May meeting.
May 16th.
That's fine.
Is that okay? In that way, everyone knows what we're planning to do?
Absolutely.
I mean, obviously, if there's a traffic accident or something, we're not going to hold you.
You know, heart attacks.
Yeah, please.
All right.
Second?
Do we get all that motion together, or do we want to...
I think that was, I think that was pretty good. Sure.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.